The EP Podcast, heard everywhere podcasts can be found and always at theepodcast.com.
Sitting down here at the nine foot homemade oak bar, we have a gaggle of people. I don't know, they're all teachers, but I think I used that word correctly. Principal of Southwest Grammar School, Scott Liskow, was that the, the proper use of the word gaggle?
I think so. Uh, the geese have been an issue at, uh, Southwest, so that, that ties in nicely. You may have noticed the, uh, the coyotes, uh, the fake coyotes that we've, uh,
Yeah, I was about to say, we got more to talk about on this show than I thought we had.
No, we have employed some, uh, fake coyotes that have just helped us clean, keep our, uh, playground a little bit cleaner, uh, as the seasons change.
These folks from Southwest School, as well as County Commissioner John Daly, my guest on this episode of the EP Podcast, brought to you by the First National Bank of Evergreen Park, located on the corner of 95th and Pulaski. Go on in there, see them today. See them for an account. See them for a heloc loan. See them if you have a small business. I have my business account there. I have my personal accounts there. I have the kids' accounts there. The junior savers account for my littlest one. With a junior savers account, kids can earn interest on every dollar they deposit. They get to watch their money grow. They get a statement every month. You get to keep track of it linked up to your accounts. Show your kids how fun and rewarding saving can be and set them up for success. No minimum to open up that junior savers account. The First National Bank of Evergreen Park member FDIC. I, I had a child, my youngest, spent one year over at your school, had a wonderful experience. And of course, his teacher came down here, which is, they've already had their reunion. It was such a big deal because it was a couple of years ago and it was during COVID, but I'm going to let you introduce everybody here. We'll get to that at some point, but, but who do you have here with us?
For sure. So I have a, a, a variety from, from different grade levels, um, going from primary to, to upper grade. Uh, we have Julie O'Connor, uh, who teaches kindergarten, um, Colleen Cushing, who teaches second grade, and then two members from our fourth grade team, uh, Ali Grazovich, who teaches math and Laura Sullivan, who teaches some science, social studies and social emotional learning.
Such an interesting like range too, because my son Nick, uh, was in kindergarten with Julie and then, uh, he's in fourth grade now. So we're right, right in the range here, man. I've got this, I've got this all down. This is awesome. So, uh, first off, I'll, I'll start off with a great story before we get going. So Julie came in and I didn't recognize her because the only time we met was over Zoom when they were doing the Zoom classes during COVID. He got to see her, but again, everybody was wearing a mask. So it's something like, I looked right at you and you're like, you know me. I'm like, I don't know you, which is like the funniest thing ever. And then we were also laughing because we were down in Clearwater Beach like last year and we just happened to drive by her while she was on the sidewalk and Nick saw her. So we, we keep bumping into each other. How are you?
Good. How are you? I can't get rid of you guys, which is a good thing. I'm glad about that. I was very excited to see Nick. He's doing great. And yeah, I really enjoyed having him in kindergarten.
Now, that's awesome. I wish you still had him because then you can enjoy him beating on the drums because that's what he picked up. He is the kind of kid that would, of all musical instruments, what can I make the most noise out of? Yeah, exactly. So, so tell me a little bit about what's going on over at Southwest right now. I am familiar with the school. Like I said, I had a kid that was in there for a little while and, uh, I love the school. I had a great experience when I was there. Um, but, uh, it sounds to me like you guys have gotten some, is it awards, distinction? Take me through what this actually is.
Yeah. So, um, every year around this time, uh, the, the Illinois Department of Education, ISB, um, State Board of Education releases their school report cards. So it's a, it's an important time for schools just to look back on some of the progress they've made around different metrics, um, and what they do, uh, as part of that school report card is they assign a ranking or a designation. And we talk a little bit about this at school board meetings, um, but there are three designations, uh, and they range from targeted, uh, to commendable, all the way up to exemplary.
And you really want exemplary.
You really want exemplary.
Yeah. Targeted is like, you didn't do very well.
Yeah.
Right? So you guys, I would assume if you're on the show talking about it, got exemplary.
Yeah, we are really excited about that. Um, we, when those rankings came out, I mean, it's something we've been chasing for the, the last couple of years, um, as a staff and have, have flirted with that a couple of times. Um, but exemplary is a really big deal because it means you are performing in the top 10% of schools, um, in the, in the state of Illinois. And to, to put that in perspective, um, there are, I think, 3,039, uh, elementary schools in the state, uh, that are part of this report card. Uh, and so that means we're in the, we're in the top 300, which is just truly an amazing accomplishment and a testament, uh, to the, the, the staff, the students and the, in the community, uh, that, that rallies behind our school.
That is amazing. And you know, it's a big deal. And I think that we get used to the accolades for schools and Evergreen Park because we always hear so many of them. We hear them for the high school. We hear them for District 124. I mean, we're kind of spoiled here. Like it's something I've kind of tried to remind people of, like you're, you're surrounded on three sides by CPS. This isn't the same as CPS. In fact, I think I made Dr. Woodland, your superintendent laugh out loud last time she was on the show when I compared it. She's like, no, we're not the same because it isn't. You guys, you, you bring in these things. Is it something where it comes as a directive from above? Like, hey, we're an excellent system. We need to keep these things up. Or is this something that comes naturally just because you're doing a good job and just getting recognized for it?
Yeah. I mean, the, the school report card is a complicated, you know, set of, of dynamics and metrics that, that come together. Um, and it, and it really is a collection of, um, of initiatives and scoring, uh, around things. So for example, um, you get a certain amount of points for, uh, a different categories. And one of them is how proficient are your students in math and reading? How many of your kids, what percentage of those kids are on grade level, are achieving the meeting expectations on the state test? But that only accounts for a small percentage of the overall school report card for us. That's 15%. 15 out of 100 possible points goes to that proficiency. And so a school can't attain and achieve exemplary status, um, just on proficiency alone. They have to take into account all of the other things. You have to grow your students who are receiving academic support and you have to grow your students who are receiving enrichment. And so it really takes a, a whole team effort, which is why I thought it was important to have, um, teachers from across grade levels, um, to talk about some of the work that we've been doing. Because at the end of the day, um, for us, 53% of our score is, um, is student growth and how well our students are growing on math and reading.
That's amazing. That's amazing. So who, who would you, who's an expert here? Who do you want to, who do you want to throw this to? Who's going to talk about what they're doing? And does it start at the kindergarten level? Do you want to go with the fourth grade? The fourth grade teachers are standing in the back. Like I feel so bad for them, right? Standing in the back. Like we have so many people down here. I had to put a microphone behind the bar. Like we're really standing back there. Ladies, uh, can you, can you kind of talk a little bit about what you're doing in the fourth grade and why it's different in Southwest, what you're doing, why you're getting these accolades?
Um, so we recently had a, I mean, in the last couple of years, we had a shift in administration, um, superintendent curriculum director, um, in our district office. And because of that, they've changed a couple of our curriculum materials. And, um, I just, from our old one to our new one, it addresses more of the state standards on a deeper level. Um, meaning we just have more time to cover those things before the state testing happens. Um, and then beyond that too, it, the kindergarten, first, second grade works really hard to make sure the kids are at a good level. So we can focus on fourth grade curriculum in fourth grade, not covering as many gaps that they may have had previously.
You know, one of the things I'm curious about, since I have two fourth grade teachers is, uh, I, I always wonder, like, is it important that the two of you get along? Because, I mean, think about this. I mean, like, I, I don't know. Like I, look, I'm going to tell you, I remember going through grammar school. I went to St. Dennis. Okay. Over on 83rd and St. Louis.
Yeah.
And there were times where I could tell that the teachers that were the same grade didn't like each other, but just happened to be there. And then there were times you could tell they actually went out to dinner with each other. So I would imagine it's easier since you have kids that are at the same level, that you have a good working relationship, right?
Yeah. So it's different. This is our third year departmentalized, right? So, um, previously I had the same class all day, taught reading, science, social studies, math to all of them. And now that we're departmentalized, um, we do work very closely, but it's just, uh, we're friends. We would go out to dinner all the time. There's no hard feelings. Um, but just, um, we more collaborate on like the student as a whole overall, instead of like curriculum materials, because we don't teach the same thing.
Yeah. And you never know where you're going to bump into your student. I bumped into my fourth grade teacher for the first time in decades, just a couple of days ago. It's a crazy, and she recognized me, which is weird because I'm 47 and there was no way that you should be able to look at me and be like, that's that kid when he was 10 years old. And she picked me right out and told me who she was. So it happens. And you think about that with all the kids and her key was, and I, if either of you here at the bar would, would tell me if you do the same thing, she never switched the seats. That's, she knew exactly where I was. She was like, you used to sit three back on the window side back in, what would it have been? 1987. That's crazy to me. Do you guys switch around the kids? Do you think you could ever remember a kid that, that far into the future?
Yes, I think, I think so. Yeah. Well, I've been teaching for 36 years.
Okay.
So I started in kindergarten. So technically the kids that I taught are in their 40s that started. And then also I was in the junior high in the late nineties, early 2000s. So like Ms. Grazovich was there when I was teaching. So yeah, I've seen the whole.
Is that weird to you?
Yeah, because I'm only 40, so I don't know how they could be the same age as me.
How could this be possible? And you look like a very young 40 too. So if you don't mind me saying, so yeah.
But it is weird. I've kept contact with them too. But the boys, when I was in the junior high, they would come back, you know, like three or four years later and walk into my classroom and be like, this is O'Connor. But now they had, their voice was completely different. They were taller than me. So the boys sometimes were a little bit harder than the girls. The girls don't see the age that much.
Years and years later. Like my daughter is in college and I ran into one of her friends walking around the U of I campus. And before she recognized me, I recognized her.
Yeah.
And I, I think I coached her in softball when she was really little, lowered in this bar top.
Okay.
And they don't look much different, but I couldn't pick out any of my son's friends from what they looked like three years ago.
Yes.
It's crazy how they changed. That's why I was surprised that she actually recognized me. So the other two grades, you're, you're in current kindergarten and then is it second grade?
Second grade.
Okay. So what's going on in second grade? I should know about.
So second grade, similar to what Allie said, our new curriculum, um, I will piggyback off what Allie said. I think it really has helped. Um, it helped engage, it helps engage the kids more. Um, we recently got a new reading curriculum last year and math was the year before. So, um, they're exposed to so many more topics that they weren't seeing before. A lot of social studies topics and science topics. So they're getting deeper into nonfiction. Um, I just, I think it's, it's been a huge help to our school and for the kids. And then also like Allie said, helping fill those gaps before they get to the older grades.
Do you feel like these kids are further along than they were? I mean, maybe Ms. O'Connor could say this, but I mean, anybody's been around. It feels like they're smarter now.
They are.
I don't feel like I was as smart as my son.
We just got done learning about, um, ancient Asian civilizations.
Yeah.
The kids got to learn about Diwali and Chinese New Year and Hinduism and Buddhism. And they were so engaged. They loved it.
Yeah, I wouldn't know what to do with that.
Right. And then they, they, like last year and this year, they absolutely loved it. So it's things like that, that they're exposed to now that I think, I think it makes coming to school more interesting.
But it also feels like they're just sharper, right? I mean, it just seems like some of the stuff that they're working on, I'm just really surprised like at that level. And I even see it at the high school level with my son and my, my daughter were like, were like, shoot. When my kids ask me for help on their homework, I laugh at them. I go, I don't know as much as you do. It feels like sometimes. I mean, and it, 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 I, I would assume you see it at every level. Do you even see it at kindergarten? Are they coming in smarter somehow? Because we had Sesame Street, but now I got these little computers and stuff like that that they get when they're three years old. And it seems like they're just sharper when they come walking in.
Well, particularly at Southwest, uh, one of the advantages we have in the kindergarten grade is that most of our students come in with two or three years of preschool. So, and a lot of times those preschools are not, um, a daycare. It actually is, you know, a reputable, you know, school that knows where their kids need to go in order to be ready for kindergarten, whether it's a community center here in Evergreen Park, or it's one of the private schools, the castle, Peter Pan, one of these other ones. And I just feel like the parents have invested their time and money and then carry over what's happening in preschool. So I do remember teaching kindergarten and if they could write their name and they knew their alphabet by the end of the year, then that was considered like successful. And now again, with the new programs that we have, um, there is research in the science of reading backing these programs. And we just know better now how to teach a child how to read. And so it's, there's been a huge shift in how we change things and, you know, what we're doing. And, um, I mean, you probably remember Nick's journal that they would write every morning.
Yeah, I remember everything about that year. I was going to school with him. Are you kidding me? Like I was on the screen for the first half of it. And then he, then he went into the classroom, but I was on the screen at the beginning. Yeah.
If he, the especially, you know, a personality like Nick had, like they have, they love to write and share their expressions. And I, I see that with the kids all the time. And so when they find that writing is the way to, you know, get that out and express themselves, they get really excited about it. But this is all backed by a lot of this curriculum that has come about through the, the year of change of this new administration. But, you know, even when this came, the teachers were all involved in the selection of this. So I feel like there's a total buy-in to all of this because
This is a group thing. Scott's not just telling you what you're doing.
Correct. Or, or somebody at the district office isn't saying, this is the program that you're doing. And we all know based on our experiences and things that, that this is not going to work. This came from, again, the proper, you know, um, formation of these committees and the process of the teachers having a lot of say that these administrators have trusted us and valued our opinion. And then, then it comes about these great programs that we're able to, um, implement not only at Southwest, but across the entire district. So I think that's important too.
I love hearing that because I don't know how often you all listen to the EP Podcast or view the videos, but we had Dr. Woodland in here and we had, we had a bunch of, we've had a couple of people come in here, but I remember her distinctly telling me that one of the things that she tries to do is make sure that they're taking input at the higher level. And you always hear that from like somebody who's a boss. You're like, yeah, everybody says they have an open door policy, but are they actually listening? And you, without me even asking, were like, yeah, we're involved in how this whole thing works. I think that's really interesting.
It's a huge shift. And so I think that has a lot to do with the success of the schools as well, because the teachers just know that what we're doing every day is solid work. And we have the, we have the, the resources and the curriculum and the support to make sure that those things are happening in our classroom.
First of all, I want to say thanks for all of you coming down here and joining me and congratulations on what you're doing over there. It sounds like it's going really well. And you got a heck of a team here that like, it's funny, like I've got a big group down here and they all seem to speak with pretty much the same voice. You can see you got everybody on the same page and, and that's good to hear. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Building relationships, supporting the community and service. These are the things that Country Financial stands for. They're more than just an office you may pass by as you drive through Evergreen Park. They're neighbors who lend a helping hand and support the fabric of your community, including charitable organizations, sports, financial education and civic organizations. And since country is already your neighbor, they want to get together and chat. Call your local Country Financial representative, Mike Thauer, today at 708-425-1559 to talk about the things that are important to you and how he can help you protect them. It's now time for your EP Podcast Word on the Street, brought to you by Spoken Vine Wine Bar and Bottle Shop, northeast corner of 95th and Kedzie. An incredible array of wines, amazing small plates, a perfect place for date night, a night out with friends, 21 and over. And remember, find something you like there when you're tasting the wine. Walk out with a bottle from the wine shop. See everything they have to offer at spokenvinewines.com. In the Village of Evergreen Park, curbside leaf pickup has begun. The truck is going to rotate between quadrants. Be patient. Remember, the village wants you to fill up the yard waste bin or yard waste bags before putting extra on the curb. Meanwhile, the village has rebranded their holiday event this year. It is now called Santa's Wonderland and Santa Claus comes to town on Saturday, December the 7th from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at the community center, 3450 West 97th Street. Remember, this was the Dickens Festival. Now the festival is bringing back some of the old stuff and bringing new favorites, including a rain dog pet parade. Mark it down on your calendars. Tickets are also available for the Sounds of the Season Christmas concert at Most Holy Redeemer Church on December the 15th at 7:00 PM. This is the annual free concert from the City Lights Orchestra. Rich Daniels on this show before. Interesting guy. If you missed that interview, go back and check out the video on YouTube or the actual podcast at theepodcast.com. Tickets are first come, first served. You get up to four tickets per person. Get them at the rec department, 3450 West 97th Street while you can. Evergreen Park Community High School is hosting a fun youth night for all EP residents, fifth through eighth grade. Basketball, kickball, volleyball, football, golf, dodgeball and other games. Bring a water bottle over and join them Tuesday, the 26th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the EPCHS Sports Complex at 2700 West 91st Street. Get more details at evergreenpark.org and mark your calendars, Monday, December the 9th at 6:00 PM. The EPCH Magical Choir is going to be over at the library. Browse an exhibit of student artwork and listen to the choir sing to kick off the holiday season. Sitting down here at the nine foot homemade oak bar, we have a new guest. Have never had one down here before. County Commissioner John Daly's here. How are you?
Very good. Thank you. Well, thanks for being, glad to be with you today this morning.
You're one of the best dressed guests I've had.
Yeah, I've gone to, I've gone to Memorial after this.
I've had state senators, I've had US senators, I've had, none of them put on a suit for me.
But I'm going, I'm going to Memorial.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry to hear about that. Um, but you look good. And I, I think we're going to, I think we're going to change the dress code here. We're going to have people stepping up a little bit more when they come down here and sit in my basement.
Everybody should do their own thing.
So, uh, explain this for me because I, we were just talking beforehand and I didn't realize until that moment, how little I know about Cook County government, what a county commissioner does, the effect that you have on me locally. You know, I was telling you my background. I worked for the county government for 10 years because I was working for the sheriff's police as a 911 dispatcher. And even as a 911 dispatcher, who I know eventually in my big tree of who's above me, all the way up past the sheriff, I didn't understand exactly how the government worked that I was actually working for. So do you find that as a normal thing that people don't get what you do?
I do find that. Most people relate to their local government, whether it be the city Chicago. Here we're in Evergreen, Evergreen Park. And they relate to that, to their park district, library district. In Cook County, yes, you're absolutely right. People don't really relate to it. But we're responsible for public safety, public health. Uh, our, our budget this year is nine billion. The vast majority of that is, is public safety and health. So we work right, Cook County Health, we run Stroger Hospital, Providence Hospital, a number of clinics. So we're responsible for providing, uh, anyone who needs, uh, services could come to Stroger Hospital or any of our facilities. In reference to public safety, needless to say, as you know, it's the, the sheriff, the state's attorney, the clerk, the chief judge. So that's a vast majority of the budget. The president's office is maybe 10% of the entire budget. So we have 22,000 employee, employees. And I say the vast majority of doing hard work every single day, serving the people of the county. But you're absolutely right. I served in the Illinois House and the Senate as well. And it was, that was a great experience, meeting the members throughout the state. And I found too, even though you, you passed legislation in Springfield, people always relate back to local government. I'm proud to say in this budget, we'll be passing in the 21st of the month, we will have, it's a balanced budget, no taxes and no layoffs in the, our workforce.
So one of the pictures that I had of the county from working on the sheriff's police side, I learned in the end, if all of a sudden the police department in Cook County like went under, because it happened while I was there, like just disappeared. It was really the sheriff's responsibility to now take over. And is it similar? Is that how the county works as a whole? If there's ever a hole in terms of something's unincorporated or some village, city, town is unable to do something? Is it the county as a whole that jumps in?
Yes, especially, especially in reference to, uh, public safety.
Okay.
That's where the sheriff has come in. And they're doing it because the local governments cannot provide, because the increase of their labor for their local police department or the, or the inability to run it. It is becoming a bigger problem as we look forward. And I, a number of municipalities are looking to the sheriff to provide this, uh, uh, assistance in their various, uh, departments. And, um, so we step in, yes, when necessary with our dollars too. Most recently, we had our dollars and we've done a tremendous job in helping local governments as well as municipalities that really are in need, whether it be flooding, uh, flooding assistance, uh, and guaranteed income, which is totally separate, we did in providing services for the people of this county.
Is it safer to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it safer to say that when it comes to county government? Cause I imagine you is very similar than any other governing body. Okay. You have a president that's above you and then you have a bunch of commissioners and you all have different districts and you, you, it splits up the county in the map. Um, but it seems like most of what you do is budgeting, making sure that you have the services that are available, the medical services, the law enforcement services, all those things like that, more than passing laws. Am I right to see it that way?
Yes and no. We've, we have, you know, that's absolutely right. We enter and work with governments and we provide in this most recent with ARPA, that we had a billion dollars. We branched out and offered governments assistance. We provided assistance to, here in Evergreen Park, we do invest in Cook, where the various municipalities, not only Evergreen, but any municipality throughout the county could apply for invest in Cook. Those are dollars that we invest in coming in, providing services, whether it be sidewalks through the highway department or other small business assistance. We also help the rental assistance, which is a big provider, provider as well as in through the equity fund. So in reference to legislation, we can pass legislation, whether it be family leave, paid leave or sick pay. Uh, but then the, if a municipality wants to opt out, they can, if they're local, if they're home rule government.
Evergreen is under you or partially under?
Evergreen is under the, whether we.
In terms of your district, is Evergreen in your district?
Yes. I divide the district with Commissioner Moore. I, I used to have more of it, but in the most recent redistricting, Commissioner Moore, Stan Moore, who's, is a great friend, outstanding commissioner, uh, has gained more of it. So my, my district, my district is mainly south of, um, 95th, uh, street.
Oh, so I'm.
Into Pulaski, like in Pulaski. It cuts around. So it's, uh, we're at night, so this.
I'm at 99th and Holman.
Yes, that would be in the district.
Okay. All right. I just want to figure out, you're my guy.
Yes. I'm your guy. So you need any services, any problems?
I'll make you a list.
But we, as I said, we work with the municipalities, uh, for their needs and they have to apply. Uh, and many times it's surprising, even on, uh, small business assistance that people don't apply. And there is dollars out there, or was, is dollars through our, but they must apply. And there's a form that the county will assist them. If, you know, the small business doesn't have the mechanism to provide for grants or, but that, we will work with municipalities and helping them provide, uh, get assistance on grants.
You know, I, I will tell you, and this is just a story, kind of an anecdote to that, because, I know how difficult everything was with COVID and coming out of COVID and things like that. But I did actually apply for one of those at one point. And then I got an email that said, we're going to restart the thing. And I think as a business owner, I was kind of like, oh, I don't have the time. And that might've been one of the things that kind of like pushed me away was we're going to restart the thing. So do you, I mean, are you finding that you're doing a better job of keeping those businesses in the loop?
Right. But it's also educating people. And so the, a good percent of people just say, well, I don't want to be embarrassed. I don't, can't do this. I'm embarrassed.
No, I want your money.
Right. You know, they, they don't want to be embarrassed by, they, they say they can't do the form.
Right.
We will assist you and, and the county through the economic, uh, department, beds, Bureau of Economic Development will assist them. They work with local mayors. We have, we have outreach in the community. Anytime there's a grant provided, we put it out to the, all the, uh, chambers of commerce and all that to apply. And again, you must apply if you want to be in the mix and try to receive some dollars.
So there's, there's a lot of money we're talking about here.
As you know, as you know, it's coming to an end because our, this will be coming to an end. So it's still, but there's still dollars out there. And, um, I think we've done a good job on it and providing, especially in the district and Commissioner Moore has been a good ally on that, as well as the, there's 17 commissioners. And as you indicated, we're elected by districts. So that started in 1994. Prior to that, they were 10 elected from the city and, uh, seven from the suburbs. So in 94, we went to read districts, which is more accountability for the commissioners and for the public, I should say.
So when we're thinking about all this, because we were, we were talking about the, the budget, you had the hospitals, the police department, you know, we talk about a lot of money and a lot of things that the county can do. Does that money come exclusively from my property taxes?
The vast majority, yes. The vast majority comes through your property tax and then sales, the sales tax and others, uh, small taxes, other taxes that you would pay as an individual, the sales tax. We did not do the beverage tax. As you remember, there was a tax, I've seen a lot of tax that created opposition. The beverage taxes was probably the worst tax that, uh, that was provided or suggested, I should say.
Oh, I remember not being happy with that.
Yes. And not only you, we received, but I did try when I, and I tried when people called my office on any issue, I tried to call them back personally. And the beverage tax and other, like the sales tax, I called at least 1,100 people back myself. They were very shocked that I was calling it back. Or my assistant, you know, I'd get on the phone and they'd say, is this really Commissioner Daly? And I said, yes, it is. And then, I mean, I might disagree, they might disagree with me on why we needed the tax, the sales and, or the beverage, uh, especially the sales. But then, but with the respect to me that I, I at least had the respect for them and calling them back.
No, I actually liked that. Like the idea that you want to call.
The sale tax was, but the sales tax then provided, uh, when we implemented it, the sales tax, a good percent of that goes for, uh, additional money for people's pensions as well as highways and other improvements. But, um, the beverage tax, getting back to that was probably the, was not well thought. And it was, then we did not implement it, as you know.
Going back to the property tax thing, we've had a lot Going back to the property tax thing, we've had a lot of talk here in Evergreen Park about people's property taxes. They went up a little bit, right? And school districts have been in to kind of explain that, you know, what, where the money goes. It seems to be a thing that keeps coming up. I had State Senator Bill Cunningham in here recently, and he was talking about it as well, and, you know, his hope down in the legislature that they could find a better way to fund education, because that is the thing that's hitting property tax the most. When it comes to the county, I know we were talking before we sat down here, it sounds like the county could be actually increasing certain things but aren't doing it? Can you, can you take me through that?
Right. We have not raised our levy, which is a force, as you know, that drives property tax. So we have not raised our levy since 1996. And that, and that is the driving force, the levies, municipalities, school districts, library districts, park districts. Once they raise their levy, there is, that's, that's the main driving force. The other factor is the, when the assessor comes out and does the assessment. To rely, Bill Cunningham's absolutely right. And to, and I think there's a task force to say, okay, if we get off property tax, where do we go on a new type of tax, taxing for the state to provide the services that we need? Is it a mill which is based upon, I think Michigan has it, based upon when you, I'm sorry, your revenues go up, you're, you know, your spending, if it goes down, you cut your spending. People want accountability, and it's very apparent that the more accountability you have, and I think in this area, you have great schools, and people want good schools, but your teachers have better pay, and they deserve better pay. So, that, whatever formula they come up with. California has had it where you, you buy a home, the taxes were frozen at one time, until you resell it, and then if I buy it, then it's based upon the new formula.